I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to be in that big crowd. All right, let's start out with this evening with just a public comment, if there's any public comment before we get started. Hearing that, move over to the nuisance stuff like update. The dynamic duo.
Since last Thursday, the officers have written 21, I think nuisance letters have gone out, new ones. And then I saw they were working on them again today, so there's another probably five that went out again today. So they're continuing to work on it. As long as the snow doesn't fall, we keep gaining ground and keep on working on them. Other than that, we have three nuisance cleanups that we need to get done. The cold weather the last couple of days has hindered us a little there, but towards the end of the week, he says it's a go. So we'll get those done. And the La Rue property has been a work in progress over the last week. So that's all I got, unless you have something.
I really don't have anything to add either, just entertain questions or concerns.
Mr. Davies?
How many houses are due to be burned? How many houses are due, are scheduled to be burned by the fire department upcoming?
Right now, we have one definite.
Is that that green one?
We probably have two or three more after that.
Do you have any date on that one?
No, I do not. I know the last I talked to fire station or fire department last week, Kent said they're kind of waiting for some warmer weather.
Sure, sure. Okay. I was just asked about it.
I would imagine in the next few weeks, Jim, if we can get a nice weather day.
Because I know someone that wants to watch it burn.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Laimos?
What's the plan for the new compost site for Big Brush? Are we gonna grind that up or burn it?
Burn it.
Or push it up into a pile?
Yep, and burn it.
Because it's so spread out right now.
Yep. We will, we'll grab that with the forks and the tongs and we'll just make piles over on the pad that we install and burn it.
Is that the county's dozer sitting there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions for these guys? Thank you, sir. Next thing I'm up, why we're all here, we've got the fiscal year '26 budget considerations. Okay, we've pretty much, I think we've received all that we're, we've requested. And we've got a few people here in-house today, which really helps us, so we can ask any clarifying questions if we have it. So I'm gonna say, Susie, would you like to go first?
Sure.
All right.
So my proposal, I just kind of tried to hit all the spots that are of either concern to the library or just some things, you know, you might be interested in hearing. So I really have nothing to add to my proposal, but I would certainly take any questions, you know, anybody has.
Mr. Laimos?
The, the wall that's, does it need tuck pointing or is water leaking in or?
Yes, there is a moisture problem. And actually, if Doug would be available to kind of talk about the wall, you may be able to add stuff. I, you know.
Is that the north wall?
Yes, it's the north wall.
So would you tuck point it and then put a water barrier there also or?
Well, the tuck pointing, I think, would be the last thing. I do have an estimate on tuck pointing, but that's not, it's mainly.
Right now, there's a problem underneath on the foundation side of it. When you get underneath that really nice looking block and you kind of peel the soil back, it's actually old foundation that's underneath there and a lot of it's really, really, really old and porous. So some of that moisture is getting inside there. So we need to try to figure out how we can get that sealed up a little bit better and then a vapor barrier.
The whole length of it?
Yeah.
So how deep would you have to go there?
Well, we don't know precisely just yet till we kind of get into it, I think, more along those lines. There's going to be another footing that's even below what I'm talking about right now. But the, the foundation's just basically, like I said, we need, we need to get a vapor barrier up there and get it sealed up.
Is there, is there a, can you put a sump pump there outside? Would that help?
I don't know that, it's not collecting that much moisture to where it's like big ponding water or anything like that in the basement. It's just more of a, just more of a.
Damp?
Damp, yeah. Yep. So it's not horrible. I think we'll be able to get it by peeling some of that dirt back, maybe even put in a tile and run that into the retaining wall.
What was the price for the tuck pointing?
About $20,000 to tuck point the entire. I just had him walk around the whole building. I just will get the whole, you know, all at once. But our hope is it'll stop something before it really does get bad.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of our hope that we, you know, just like at home, you want to, you know, we can stop it now from getting worse.
Thank you.
From what I gather, Doug, so you've got where the stairs go up, but you saw the distance from the top of the stairs where the dirt meets the building, all the way down to what you'd say would be the sidewalk level, almost or a foot below that.
Right. So basically, what we're looking at a little bit on this is, yes, so it's about four foot roughly. So what you're looking at is to kind of peel some of that back out of there, get some vapor barrier up against or some sealing of some sort on that, on that block. And then we would fill it back in. But part of it also is, if you notice that slope, what's happening is all that soil that's kind of up on that hill, it's, we're in drought years, of course, so since everything's shrunk so bad, there's a very large gap between that soil and the building right now. So when it does rain or snow or get wet, it's kind of infiltrating that and it just needs to get sealed up better. I don't know that it'll ever get super perfect till maybe we can install this retaining wall that we were talking about and then get everything, of course, sealed up, but get the retaining wall to where the soil's not always falling away from the building because that's a short-toed slope, so to speak. So it's just not.
Can we do some of that in-house?
Yep, we're planning to.
Thank you.
And I will add that I have written a grant. The first part would be the retaining wall and new steps. What we don't know is the cost to dig along there to see if we need to tile or that sort of thing. But I have written a grant, excuse me, for the first part. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions for Susie?
Have you got any estimate on what the board of supervisors will be giving?
Um, no, no, we just got a letter that we had to fill out with any proposals that we as a collective, six library, county libraries, and we've not heard back, just that that was turned in. So they just said they may or may not, you know, ask to speak to us, but we can certainly go in on our own and, you know, ask, which we probably would do, I would assume, so.
Now, when is the last year of the library levy itself, Ron?
It's, well, the levy is gone.
Gone now, okay.
Yeah, they've combined, it's called a combined general fund levy. But for this fiscal year '26, that's getting reduced. It was a 64 and it's getting reduced because we had some growth in our tax evaluation, so that levy is going down. So it's, technically, it's gone now.
Right.
So it's my understanding the collection can continue, but at less percentages?
Well, it depends on your growth, what the collection is.
Okay.
And, and our levy has been ratcheted back because of that
Okay.
growth in taxable valuation, so it's, it's, yeah. I, I'm not into it deep enough to be able to tell you what it's going to be.
Right, right. I mean, the last that I had heard from the state library was a certain percentage could be collected yet till 2029, when the whole thing disappears.
I think they're just saying, if it's over a four-year period, if they go, if you take 25% away over four years, then that's, that might be what they're doing.
Yes, that is the last I heard anyway, to look for those reductions.
So I think all I, all I have to say is, you know, you're showing your report here for your request, the impact for the recent fund, funding losses, and you guys have taken some steps, you know,
Yes, yes.
to mitigate that. And then you had some items that haven't been implemented, implemented yet. But I just, I just, you know, I really appreciate that.
Sure, sure.
And anything that you guys can do to help to mitigate
Right, right.
costs a little bit to help us, we'll give, try to get what we can for you, but.
Right, oh yeah. I mean, we.
We need everybody's help.
We completely understand. Yeah, we, we understand.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, I am, you know, the last thing we would ever want to do is reduce our hours because that is services that are now lessened. But it is also on the table because of, you know, the levy and our other, you know, cuts. So no library likes to do that, but, you know, we can only take so much from so many places, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I should introduce Dale Schirmer.
I didn't know if you were just with her or if you were.
He's doing, yeah.
Oh, you're doing another one, yeah.
But he is our board president, so.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks for having me, Dale. Good luck with yours.
Well, let's, go ahead, Dale. Let's get you through there.
Okay, so I don't have a lot to add either. I'm, and I've never really done anything like this before, so I apologize if I've stated anything incorrectly. As you can see with our budget, we are projecting a shortfall this year. We are doing some things to try to alleviate that with adding some additional fundraisers possibly. We're talking about bringing back the silent auction to the annual dinner and making that more of a fundraiser like they had done in the past and things like that. The board had requested or had voted to increase the funding this year, or to request an increase in funding this year. I'm not sure if that's reflected on this
Yes, it is.
form though, okay. Mainly because of some of those budget constraints. We do have, we are saving a little bit because we had an interim director step in that was able to pick up the slack until we could hire someone. We are in active negotiations to try to hire some people or someone. And presumably, we may have to pay them more than what we had in the past because of some of the new minimum salary laws and things like that as well. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Schirner, Schirmer? Don't hear any, so it works. Good thing.
I guess I just have a question. So just to clarify, to make sure we're on the same page.
Sure.
Requesting an increase from $17,500 to $20,000 for Main Street Hampton. Yes. And then no increase on the grant, the building improvement grant funding of $15,000.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to clarify. Thanks, Dale.
All right. Thank you. Mary, I see you diligently taking notes, making notes.
Always great.
So let's, we'll just bring you up here next.
Sounds good, thanks. My name's Mary Amso. I'm the director of the FCDA. I had, when I presented the information that you requested, I also handed out some information that we've done this last year. Some of the main highlights, the types of things is housing, housing's a big issue, not just in Hampton, not just in Franklin County, but all over. And I helped Ron with the housing, us in getting that committee going for that. I'm also participating in the North Iowa Housing Conference that's going to be coming up in April. And I'll be giving you more information on that as it gets closer, but as a part of the North Central Iowa Alliance, you know, housing's huge. We need housing. And that's, so we hope to bring in contractors and things like that. I can give you an update on the NIAC Training Center. It's looking like it's going to be the fall of 26th. It's going to be located out by Industrial Park. So we're super excited about that. There was some, the plots weren't updated on, at a normal time or whatever, so that's kind of what's holding that back a little bit. But that's where we're at with that. I continue to be active in Hampton. I belong to the Rotary and try to be, participate as much as I can.
Rotary, you're not that old.
What?
You're not that old to be in Rotary.
I know. Thank you.
I was going to say, I did get a save the date thing. I forwarded to Ron. The Housing Iowa Conference is going to be September 3rd and 4th. That sounds like that'd be a whiz-bang thing to attend as well too, but I don't know why they put it so close to Labor Day, but that's probably the only day they can get the building. But anyway, that's, they're looking for speakers right now, I see, and you can book the room. And anyway, I hope that we have somebody at the Iowa Housing Conference as well. But I just see Webster City built these brand-new apartments, a lot of teachers living in them. And, and then I saw Fort Dodge just added a bunch of houses as well too. I just really hope that we can get the ball rolling on some of that. Something that's really good is the, understand they're going to go through all the land and apartments and remodel all those, and so we'll have some housing there. I think there's only four units that are rented out right now. What I understand, I think the thing holds 28, so. That's going to be good for a lot of folks to have some housing here. That's what we need.
And I've been working with Jim, with the Chamber. There's housing grant, Upper Story. So they're coming in
Tomorrow.
tomorrow, jeepers. And we're, they're going to show them what we have available. Another thing I'm doing is so construction's costs are going down a little bit and contractors are finally looking for work, which is good. So I had, someone had thrown out to this company in the Cedar Rapids area, everything that's going on in Hampton with the NIAC and all that stuff. So I'm working on getting that, those people here, and we'll touch on the different things in Hampton, maybe possibilities to that.
Mr. Laimos?
So the NIAC building, will that, when will they break ground? In '26 or?
They're hoping to open in '26, fall of '26 for classes. So they'll be, the original plan was, you know, we'd be open a little bit sooner, but with the classes, you know, they're starting the fall, going like that type of thing. So hurry up and wait. I think the bids are, I heard the bids were going out, but I heard they weren't supposed to go out, so I'm not exactly sure where that's at.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mary? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Do you want me to summarize?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the other one's Historic Commission, $1,000 request. I don't know, Jim, do you want to say anything about that?
There's required training every year, and so we allocated $1,000 for I don't know how many years, except for when the 150 plus one generally don't spend it all. It all depends where the conference is at. But it's one of those things that we, we need some money so in order for us to keep our, the training up to date for the Certified Local Government Certification.
Thank you. And then Municipal Band submitted a written request for $8,500, which is the same as the current fiscal year. They're requesting it remain the same. And Senior Center requested $4,000 again. They did a written request, so you have the information. And I think that's all for funding requests. Anybody have any further questions on that?
Yeah, I've got a question about that. Is that the Main Street program that's on probation?
Yes.
Main Street Hampton, yeah. Jim, do you want to talk about that?
So what do we have to do and why is it on probation?
Well, the main reason is, my understanding is that when it's a national accreditation, now the state used to come in, now the national came in. And I think where they got dinged, if you want to call it that way, is when the nationals were here and they were meeting with the committees. A lot of the volunteers of the committees did not show up. So a big part of it is making sure that people are involved with it, and I think that's the main reason. And there's a plan in place. I've been working with the state on that. And we just have to, we're working on like a Main Street, like subcommittee that'll focus on the requirements of the Main Street program. And that'll allow the Chamber Board to, I guess, focus on the mission of the Chamber, which is countywide.
Thank you.
I do have a few comments to throw in there. I did some research and some homework, and you might not like what I have to say, Jim, but I'm happy you're there. And I am all for Main Street. I am excited about Main Street. I think it is important that we belong to Main Street. But out of the 55 businesses downtown, in our downtown district, 25 are non-Chamber members. That's 45% of the businesses are not Chamber members. And some of the things that I think that they've looked at, that that were dinged on is, well, number one, we're currently on probation, which makes me unhappy. Some of our board members are questioning whether it's worthwhile, which baffles me, and I think they need some education on that. There is a lot of confusion between Main Street and the Chamber. The public doesn't understand that, and we need to make, do a better job of clarifying that. But I also want to see more of an effort from the downtown businesses. I think it's really tragic what's happening. They're closing on Saturdays. They're, they've just given the town, they've trained everybody. Hampton is closed on Saturdays, go out of town. Main Street is dead downtown on Saturday. They take up valuable customer parking spaces. The owners and employees of the downtown businesses, they take all the hotspots. So if we have customers, they have to park further away and walk. I've watched people walk from long-term medical care to rustic brew, customers. My north side of the building, that is all downtown employees that park there. There's no customer parking there. No loading zone, nothing. The landlords that have tenants that live downtown, they're not enforcing that parking. Tenants are not supposed to park downtown during business hours, but they do. Coonley Apartments is notorious for that. And very few of our Main Street businesses volunteer for any of the committees or any of the activities that are happening downtown. They don't participate in them at all. So I think that's something that really needs to be done. We need to see that our downtown is supportive of Main Street Hampton. And I think we need to see that before we give them any more money. I really do. Throwing money at it isn't going to change anything. I'd rather see us put more money into the building grants so that we can maintain the integrity of our downtown buildings, if nothing else. But anyway, I am in 100% support of Main Street. I love the program, but I think we need to get more out of our businesses. They need to participate a little more. I think they need to prove to us that they deserve our, our support.
Who goes around and talks to them and tries to get them to join?
To join the Chamber, that's, that's not Main Street's job. That's Chamber's job. And that would be our director and our ambassadors and our board, our board. Anybody else that belongs to the Chamber should be encouraging other businesses to join. And the, the other thing is we don't keep our funding separate. So the Chamber's funding and the Main Street funding is mixed together. And we need, we need to have that separate too.
Well, the grants is separate.
Yes, yes. But anyway.
Well, I agree with what she says about Saturday. And I don't know how to change that. I mean, it's up to the individual business. If they're not making money on Saturday, don't stay open. But you're not going to make any money on a Saturday if you're not open. I always said that about Dairy Queen in Iowa Falls, they, they don't serve chocolate ice cream. Well, we never have a call for it. We don't have a call for it because you don't serve it. And it's just a, you know, a spinning loop, and you can spin it into the ground. I miss a couple. The restaurants are now closed on, on Saturday afternoon. That's tough because you usually went to at least one of them about every Saturday afternoon. But, you know, if they can't get employees either, that's a tough deal. I don't know whose call it is to go out and say, hey, what's up? You know, that's not my call. I really don't want it to be my call. But is it a Chamber thing? Is, is that something that the Chamber does or is that something Main Street does? I, that's where I don't know who should approach it, because it's got to be done carefully. You just can't walk into some businesses and, you're going to be open till 3 o'clock. You know, I'll tell you where to go. That's not going to happen. So we need to create some sort of a demand that says, hey, can you be open for lunch on Saturday? And otherwise, we're going to have, you know, just going to be dead.
And it is.
Yeah, it is. I, I, you know.
I'd like, I guess I'd like to comment, you know, Jerry, I mean, I, I agree with you, but tell me something I don't know. A lot of these problems you talk about have been going on since the Chamber started, especially like the parking, because I remember it goes in waves. There used to be a campaign where they would put like parking ticket to, on like an employer's or employee's car, like could you move type of thing. But I would disagree with you that it's not just the Chamber. The Main Street is in the area downtown.
Right.
And they have four committees. One of them is promotion.
Right.
And that, you know, I think if we get the committees working, like promotion to going and working with those.
And here, here's, let's back up a minute, though. It's the same people on each and every committee, the same volunteers over and over and over again. We need people from our businesses to step up and get involved and be, and volunteer for it.
Well, and that's, I guess, as the interim manager, that's one of the things I want to be working with, with committees to go out, not only recruiting new volunteers, but re-energizing the volunteers we have and maybe getting other volunteers that had been involved in the past, get them back involved again. So that's, you know, I think those issues you talk about are very important, and I think that's what the committees need to work on. And that's what my goal would be, working with those committees as well as the Chamber Board to make all those things happen and hopefully deal with some of those problems.
I thought you were talking about church boards there for a second, because it's always the same.
I think you could apply it to any.
So always on church boards too, it's the same people.
But thank you for bringing that up, because those are exactly very important points.
And I'd have to echo, echo, it's the, it's the other businesses, some of those are in the Chamber and some that may not be. But I think the ones that are in the Chamber are the ones that'd be out there, you know. Peer pressure works everywhere, you know. Let's get in there and say, hey, we need some help here.
And it's the same peer, peer pressure that's going, now we're going to close at noon. And we went from 3 o'clock and now we're going to close at noon, and then three other people say, well, jeez, they're closing at noon. I think we'll close at noon. And that's a bad loop to get into. And I, you know, like I said.
And the customer's saying, well, everybody's closed, what's going on?
And you're not going to walk into a business to say, you're going to be open till 3 o'clock, you know, because you're not paying those employees. It's just a slippery slope, and I hope that, you know, maybe somebody can step up and say, hey, well, we're still going to be open till 3, or 4, whatever, you know, 3 or 4, whatever, anything more than, than noon or 11 o'clock. So I, I just hope for the best on that whole deal, the whole Chamber thing, because it's, it affects all of us. And this, this part about, you know, not all the businesses are, are Chamber members downtown, that's kind of another sad point. All we got to pull on the rope. So hopefully we can get something done and hopefully, I mean, it, it'll, it'll, it'll get done, so.
Anything else? I just stop up real quick as we bring, bring this meeting to a close. Budgets, budget cuts, nobody likes them. It's so much easier just to, you know, have more money and do things what we want to do, but sometimes we have to cut them. It's not easy to do, but everybody has to do it. Even the city has to do it. You know, we're not the, we're not the end, end, end all, you know. We can get more money from the city because any cuts that are made at the state level, they come through us too. So we, we experience that and we, and we make adjustments to our budgets as well. We've got a big, big year going, and we did some main, on our main stuff. We're looking at the industrial part and fixing that road, and we got to pave the 12th Avenue after we got that done. We got the big, big water valve replacement going on at the, at the thing. There's a lot of stuff going on. So hopefully, you know, people know that, that we're, we're just not sitting on our hands, you know, waiting, you know, getting the, getting the budget approved. We're really, we're really making some things happen with what we have. And, and we just got to keep moving forward, and I think we can end up there.
I just, I comment, uh, the big unknown is what the legislature is going to do.
Mm-hmm.
From all the comments I see, um, from the different legislators, they may, they have town hall meetings and they, they get interviewed by reporters, but the leadership in Des Moines is, they want to do something bold with property tax reform, and, um, I don't think it's going to be good for cities and counties and schools, um, and I don't know that much can be done. Um, but the problem is, is that most of our budgets will be set by the time they do their bold moves. And so, uh, we have to, in my opinion, just, you know, be cautious of what might be coming when we put together the budget, and, uh, you know, I'm already getting, you know, I've got some indicators on, on our levy, I don't know what the total levy is going to be, I'm still working through all those numbers, but, uh, the combined general fund levy is, is what used to be the eight-ten levy, you know, they've now eliminated the library levy and, and, uh, allowed us to, to go up some, and like I said, um, the current fiscal year is eight dollars and sixty-four cents per thousand on just the combined general fund levy. And since we had growth in taxable valuation, that's getting ratcheted back to eight fifty or something. Um, but there's other levies that, uh, are included, like the property and liability insurance levy. Well, that continues to increase. Um, uh, insurance companies, you know, they just continue to reduce coverages, to reduce their exposure to claims, and they increase premiums. And we have millions of dollars of property that's, uh, in value that's covered, um, and workers' comp and things like that, and liability. So that continues to rise. Uh, I don't know exactly how high that's going to go, but that's a direct property tax levy, so that continues to go up. So when the state says we need to reduce property taxes, well, we pay for that insurance with a property tax levy, and if it's going up, we have to increase that levy. So, uh, it's hard to rationalize the thinking, but, anyway, so that's one levy. And then the dispatching levy, um, hopefully that'll remain constant, I don't know. Um, hopefully we'll hear soon what that will be, but that, that can go up as well. Um, that's a direct property tax levy. And then, uh, employee benefits, you know, as your health insurance, uh, claims fluctuate, health insurance premiums go up and down, um, that is a levy as well. And, uh, you know, there's times when we can lower that levy, there's times when we have to raise it. And then this next fiscal year, we'll be having a debt service levy, which we haven't had for 18 years, probably, uh, for the pharmacy property. Um, I've been doing a little research on if we could, you know, if things are tight and if we want to borrow a little more on that bond to maybe do some of the, do the Imperial Road improvement, um, and then maybe if you want to do the parking lot across the street, I was talking about possibly lumping that in. We cannot do that. I just found out that the bond for the four and sixth first street northwest, the old pharmacy property, that's a taxable bond, we can't put other projects in because those would be non-taxable. And, uh, with what I'm hearing coming from the state, this pro, this parking lot across the street is, in my eyes, is getting to look more like I want than a need. I think we're at the point we have to look at needs and not wants. We, can we get by without the parking lot for, you know, a couple more years? We've been getting by without it. So that's just, I'm just giving you some of my thought processes as I work through the budget process. Um, so, anybody have any questions?
Well, it's a glorified parking lot now. I mean, there's all those people parking along the alley there.
Yeah, that, there is some asphalt that's been there forever, and they park on that, yeah, bank and pharmacy employees. Yeah, so.
I just had a hunch that we, and, and it's better to me to explain it to somebody, um, when we have to levy or borrow for those two properties, that we don't throw in like a catch-all into, well, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. No, this is just for this. I, it's easier to explain.
It, yeah, that's right, and it will be that way, there's no choice.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah. You know, we, I, I think that, that, that this body, this elected body does a, a good job of, you know, um, good stewards of taxpayer money. And one example I gave to the legislators recently is the street sweeper. You know, street, new street sweepers are $300,000, and I explained, we had a city councilman who, uh, sent me a link of a used one on Facebook, and we looked at it, we negotiated the price down from there, bought it for $2,000, and it really works well. It doesn't, not much to look at, but it really cleans the streets well. And I explained, that's a, an example of local elected officials trying to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. And we could have borrowed $300,000 and used the debt service levy and raised property taxes for a piece of equipment. You didn't do that, and that's an example of, uh, you know, leaving decisions at the local level, but.
Well, I was, I was pretty proud of the letter you wrote to them. That was, if, if they don't wake up over that, which they won't, uh, but it was a good letter and, and drove home a few points that needed to be made.
Yeah.
Anything else? Not hearing anything at all. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting this evening. Thank you.
You bet.